Kila de si amo birenti mwa poni no she lu. Kila de to bireli oledje, gomina ife le, kilo de to bireli oledje are orilede. Ati ria amo orilede, sa amo birenti in she dada. Adesiri kwe, ni ndu bo bo, unka ti mwa tin she, amo birema in she dada. Gantima ba wa ni ipo, ni ipo a she benye, ju amo ba ba wokonelo. Mo fe so kwe, otito gay, awa lokan. Si bo bo wa ba ba kwe awa lokan, anila ti gi giri, si oju she wa. Ako ak ba do ma faseni, ni no she lu ma, eni ya wa ta in sho she lu. Bi mo she so, ya wo lo she lu nemi, okomi si di po mu, ni no she lu, mo mo bo she in lo. Si o bireyo ba bosi bombo, kosa ita lo kwe ni ya deno le, eni le ma jafo eto ni. Talos kwe, inu ile dana, nekani she o birewa. Ki de a she kwe enti o ba kaweni, nekani ni o fi le Nigeria, tenya ba ti kade we me, we me fa la kobere. Kosi bi ti oledje, ki isho ni bo ni wa fi in she, ento ba ti le tole. Bo birende a she manje ali tole dada, o birene le she. So, eje ka jadi, thank you very much. Mrs Alaja Aminu, we were talking about challenges, then we want to pinpoint the challenges, then the way out. So the challenges.
We have talked a lot about the challenges, everybody has said it, that they, there is intimidation against women. Because men, they believe they know it all, and that's why Nigeria is not working. Not only to make Nigeria to start working again, we have to involve women in politics and political process. And I've said it several here, this morning, the way forward is by belonging to a political party. Women should start belonging to political party, taking active role in politics. We should not just be an ordinary electorate, electorate. Being a photo alone, we can, we have to start fight, Abi, protesting for a post. You might be a, be in a selective post or elective post. And you know, we have power, we have that ability. We have to start using that our power. Because as our moderator has said, that we are the organizer, we are own organizer. If we start putting women in power, definitely, especially most ministries that I've mentioned, that even Nigeria have tested women in those ministries, compared to what is happening these days. Putting men in the Ministry of Education. When women, they are very good in doing things that will not only benefit them, but will benefit their family, is benefit the society and the country in general. We are not selfish, you know, women are not selfish. The way forward is for us to belong to political party and to right, start asking for our rights. I will share you an experience that I had during this photo education campaign that we did. I met with some school aides. A woman just said that, like my moderator has said that her husband belongs to a political party. And she said that there is no need for her again to be actively involved in politics. I said, no, you have to be actively involved. Most of the reason why they are against women is this, most women they are putting in power, they are foreigners. If you belong to a political party, definitely, if they want to choose anybody, you should send them to choose within the territory, somebody that knows the environment very well. You know, these politicians, they so call they godfathers, they bring their children from abroad, that doesn't know anything. From where he is governing, governing now, where you minister this thing. That is where, what is making women to be failing in this, in their this thing. But if you don't belong, if you don't, if you are not actively involved, how are you going to talk? How are you going to say your mind? Please, I'm implying us belong, even the NGOs, the religious groups that we have here, we can start sponsoring our people to belong, we can sponsor ourselves. And we should forget about this hatred, because we women, we envy ourselves a lot. That's one of the problem, the major problem we are having as a woman. You know, we, emio juai wo oju mi, ta wo bireman she ye. I don't think this is the right time for us to stop it. Awo amawa anle sin to lo lewi, talo affected you, cha wo birekodi. Awo amawa cha de lewi, mwa ri she, talo affected. Kosi opunya afu cha de lo, di do do no oke ke ke, tell that umso lo wonje na. One de paru ema di bu shebe, awa ania wa agba o, this is the only time we see the. Let me tell something, they are encouraging this poverty in our society. They don't want it to be eliminated at all, because ono tofi penetrates wa go go niye. Enti biun pa, tome oje ni no le, tomba funi one thousand, definitely, abanao. Abanao, olo simbe, unba o no shekmi, eje ka jadi. Ko shekwe kama je o lutele ni kon, ka wa no, ka contest as a political chairman, secretary. Then once oni pa o bireo ra ye, he le, ah ah in this computer age. Let's ask for factual meeting, ka wa no demand for it. You can be order meeting at the coffin of your own, ema madanonje, ema mashe meeting. We do it a lot these days. Those are the ways we can ask for our rights. This computer age, consider us as a woman, she understand, wheni koko, tomba basically as a factual meeting. We ask, let's try, please, let's belong to a political party, then these NGOs are here. Let's try to make our voice to be heard. To e ba cha de u, ke shekwe kama cha de di bo ni kon, eje ka no oje kini o, entoma di bu fu. Eje ka si fera ra wa, ento ba telebi, orimusi kontomani, ento ba mono, lo ye ka telewa, cha di no wa. Ente ba mo bo good, e ka koya ya ka tele niye. Kama ma bi kwe ah, che omo lakba, cha kuama je o gatiwa, eje kamue ero i koru ra ye koru niara. Tori yo je ye si boju, amon konye lo koya je wa, amo amawa ni de ba you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Alaja Aminu. When she was talking, she said something about these many politicians bringing their children from abroad. Foreigners coming to take elective positions, when others are her own base are there. That is what we are saying, in politics, you have to come out, you have to fight for your rights. You don't have to be passive in anything you do, it's not only education that can make you speak out. Wherever you are, ni ibiki biti ebawa, eni ya wa, ema ja feto ni, inya je ye, o ma oko ju fo bire. Asikuti tobi mo she so, la ti jafo eto wa. I want to thank the panelists, Mrs Ibikule and Alaja Aminu, for doing justice. For this short, very short time given us, you know, most of the organizers are men. Maybe it's part of it that they gave us this short time, very short. So we hope to come back some other time to do justice. If we have this type of session, honor and all, maybe we will find changes in what we want. So it's time for questions from people on the floor. If you have any question, please raise up your hand. Okay, one, two. Okay, there's someone at the back raising up his, no, 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 no. Okay, three, okay, the first question.
Yala ja, you know me do kwe bo bo a one b, a she a do kwe, olo wa koe wa. Ema kori kote ba de ibite tin shinkon, ema so kwe eni ya gomino, eni ya da jo, she omo ye ga. She, she omo ye ga ga, she wa wa lo ribi, she wa wa la ra gomino, she wa wa la ra da jo. Ten teni te fi she meeting, kilo de ta a she le, she meeting, pe loa amo birebe wa. Awa educated about the problem, aman so, wa lo ba rifra ti o kawe ye. Onti tabamui ru konye bu, wa leku, ida akawe, by this time, we need unity. Very, very important, because o bireli lota o, our, against you wa. Secondly, you need catch them at young. Ki she, ramba ti le shobamba ba, lo ye kama she ru koba. Ah, ni si ita, ni konti aja Aminu, wa so fuwa, kosi toni kama korawa jo, kama she padé, lo re kore. Awa kore, wa ba, ipadi ore, friends club ni wa fi bero she lu. Kilo de ta wa no fi friends, friend, friend bere, ejo, eje kanifia ra wa, eje kamue tanu kuru. Now, we need advocacy, sensitization, awareness, involvement within the community. All round, even at the grassroots, very, very important. Thank you very much. My name is Ajia Adekule, National Council for Women's Society.
Thank you, Ajia Adekule. And, and our is not really a question, she is trying to find way, ways out of this quagmire. So the next person, number two, money.
Thank you for the platform and the opportunity you've given onto us to be able to be part of this program. When the theme of this program is increasing women and youth participation in politics and electoral process. I would like to ask that, what is it that the society or the community asks to help the youth to participate in politics? Because everything about politics is also about money. Okay, we youth, we are on the streets, we don't have work, we don't have money. Parents that paid for our school fees are still the one feeding those that are also old enough to be feeding the parents. So how do you expect us to participate in politics affairs? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Alaja Aminu, you have to answer that question, catching them young, how do you want them to go?
And I told you during my discussion, I told you about Nigerian Women for Trust Fund. They are on grant, they are already doing it. They have mentees, some youths, they are training for politics, sexual abuse, they have so many programs for them. In Osho State presently, we have two of them, one resides in Ede, another one is in Fe, and they are doing what they for the world. We have some organization they are training, go and browse it out. You can Google B as make and call, you know, there are so many programs out there, there is meant for youth training. Especially, you know, Nigerian Women for Trust Fund is doing their program in partnership with European Union. Yeah, they are the one sponsoring them. There are some programs on grant for youths, they are training them towards this electoral participation and electoral acts. I can give you their contacts after the program, if you need, if you want to belong, thank you.
I think you've taken note of our answer, the person that asked the question. Has she answered your question, has it been answered? So it's not only obedience that we should be doing on the social media, we should.
No ma.
Okay, she has no answer.
Okay, in the sense that, okay, let's start from when we were trying to curb the act of circumcision for women, for girl child. We, I grew up with the mentality that women gather at the marketplace to sensitize other women that this thing you are doing is very evil and it should be curbed. So I am just the only one and every other person present here, every other person that needs this information, it is not getting across to us, because we are the marketplace, we are at the junction. A lot of people have turned themselves to different things. If sensitization, real sensitization whereby not just TV and radio, outdoor sensitization, please and please, I'm begging.
Excuse me, please, how about your civic education you learnt in school? It starts from there, please, the civic education has been introduced to education system. You start from there, you know, if you don't have the ser, you know, if you don't have the ser, the interest, if it is not there, nobody can force you to go into politics. You have to be committed, you know, courageous. Forget about the here saying that politics is for, is too, is for the men, is for other people. You know, if you, you know, there is a lady, I think Hillary Lorie, her clip has been circulated, she's a Ujabiyan's girl. You know, she's into politics now. You must have the ser to go into politics first, she understands, nobody can force you to go into politics. You have the ser, and that's what we are, this training you are receiving this morning, that you forget, you, you overcome your fear that the politics is a dirty game, it is not a dirty game, it's meant for young, old and women. Not only men, not, no only old people, young people can only come into, once you are eighteen years, you can come into politics. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next question, please.
So many things, and we are talking about financial problem. So they have started training them, that whatever you learn, maybe you learn something. How can you eh eh show what you are doing to people? So that we have many customers that will come to you. So young girls, we expect them to start to learn one trade or the other and make sure that they do their advocacy on media. And when they are doing that, they should not be using their Instagram or WhatsApp or any other thing that is negative to their life. But they should try to use this media or this digital something for the positive things for their life. So we have started that one. Then I want you to both trace, because Mrs Somidi, Abi, I like that, Honorable Midino, mentioned that women should start cooperative. And I'm happy that we that are in APC women, we are running a program and establishing a program called Ashiwadu Women Cooperative, which we are hoping that we will use for all women that want to contest election, to come out through that forum. So when we talk about funding, I want us to please emphasize on this cooperative. Because financial problem is the real problem that we are having in.
Thank you very much ma for that beautiful question, Mrs Ibikule will answer that. Yes, what she said.
Okay, the lady has for more sensitization, that we cut across the country or the states for the youth to know what is really going on in electoral activities or in politics. For example, in Inaynek, before the advent of election, we'll be making use of serving cop members together with our staffs at the local government, you know, we have our offices at the taxi area, local government in Osho. So we train these coppers, we train these coppers on how to sensitize people on electoral activities. So they do normally go around to, I mean, to sensitize people, the marketplaces, church, churches, mosques. Then they go to artists' meetings, to meet them on their meeting days, to sensitize them on electoral activities. So it's part of sensitization for, I mean, for voters, which includes the youth too. And we didn't stop on that alone, we have selected secondary schools that we do normally go there to sensitize them and update, update them on civic education. Even when they are having, when they are about to pick, I mean, they are leaders like maybe school prefects or and other, and other leaders, we do ask them to do it in an election, I mean, in a way as if they are voting in real election. So through that, we normally encourage the young girls to start participating in active position in school. By doing so, they will have developed themselves before they become adults and before they can join, I mean, before they join any political parties of their home. Through that, they might have developed enough confidence on how to do, on how to face others and how to perform in any electoral activities in the country. So that, that is my own take on the question the lady asked. I don't know whether I've actually answered that question.
Thank you very much, and with the explanation given by the two of Mrs Ibikule and Alaja Aminu. I think the young lady that answered that question will be satisfied now that so many things, so many efforts are ongoing to catch young ladies, very, very young. So that what is remains, like she said the other time, is for you to have the zeal. If you don't have the zeal, if you are passive in nature, there is no way you will participate. So, so many concerted efforts are going on. The next person to ask the question.
Okay ma, thank you very much ma. I want to say mine in Yoruba language, I don't know if that is permitted? Okay, thank you. Eya, muka fe she, kikile ni funkoti, ya wa solekan. Eya ba bo, eni ke kere ba ilati, ba karoko, toto she bi o we o. Mori wipé, ni peki amo bireyo ko pa, ni no she lu, tabiki, wa cha de la ti she, amo koto jo mo ba. La ti ke kere lo ko lo ko ba, la ti ma je ka wa o biremo, koya ki wa ma wa ni wa ju, pei poe, lo ye komma wa le ye okore. Awa kokoi de ni ti mwa ba ti dadama, bo bo aroye to wo kache, o le ma ba ma tori wipé, ati kosi no wa pe bu she ye, kote bi ayeye o niye. La kokoto ma konya, to mo bireba, she re pa pe lo toy. O sha o po la doa wa ya wa la ti ma so fu bire wipé, fi le fu, she bo ma po kore lo. Awa koi, omo ndaga, o fo jo ju ma do, amari wipé, amo bi konwa to ge wipé o kore lo ye kuwa mbé, koleto so bire. Ni pa ekoi le ga pa pa, o wo po la ti ma so fu mo bire wipé, o ge ge ki, o ge, o ge ma, o ge ma di nu, o ge ma buru ilio komalon lo yi, ah ki so fu kore wipé, o ge ma di nu, o ma be ya wo. So, o ge ku ma, kokore ni lo ko wipé, ani ai mo ye a shebe, ti o bire de wo wipé, ki she a shebe la do ta wa ti wipé, o fi o kore si wa ju, to fu, kuda, tabatu o ni nu be ya wo, ama beri lo ko lo ko, ba ke ki o bire je, virgin. Be a, she wa banle, aban banle, shubua ati eh nim, ati eh fe mo bo ya kore, bo ya bo kore leo, aban bo kore leo, ati eh fe mo. So awa koi, o ti wa ni wa ma kore, no la ti ke kere wipé, bo bo bito bati ri o bire. O bire je, o koto o ma temo le, tori wipé la ti ke kere, no ti fu si no ma kore wipé, i wa lo ga, omo bire, oni, o ge, amo ba le ge fu, so mo fe ro awa obi wa, wipé la ti ke kere, ti omo kore ato mo bire, ba ge afu koko, to ba eh beri, to ba ge eto omo bire ye ni, eh ba omo kore ye wipé eto re ni, la ti be omo kore na ma o wipé, ki ka she wipé, ke ye ka she to ba wo pe a shebe ni, ele ni moni pe ki fe ke, o ti ya wa so, le ye lekan, eche.
Oh she kupo, wa le, unka to so ye, lota, awa a sha ye, like, biwa she in solataro, a culture, African culture. Be o bire lo ba do wa le ye, koribé ma unse yo, bo bo akitinya, ni ati in she, la ti rike koribé ma, ni no le unse. Iru ebiba emio ni fi o ma kan, so kwe ma, so kwe o kore ni wa, iwa ni ko she kinika. When my son cooks in the kitchen, we call him a cook, one of them, one of my sons, to ba she to ma ko ma for plates oni. My daughter, we, I have only one daughter, the others are boys. My daughter will tell them, if you don't wash your plate, if you don't clean the kitchen, you don't think I will do it for you. So, ni eji tawai, o ti ya to diye diye. Unka ti mwa fi koro awa ni, ya kama, si kwe o kore ni kinika, shukun unse, awati awa la ye o diye, ni ati ri po ya to diye diye. Equal opportunity ni, ni je je nda, je nda's ba do ni, o kore, koya to si o bire, eche. The next question, please. Okay, that's the slogan, okay.
Eh 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 hello.
Neglect women, lose election.
Hello ma, and we want you to use that slogan now, for anybody that's become our governor. Te fo fu, eje komo wipé, ane posjo me tanye, I will refer this time I run, this is our ministry, ejo, eje komo, it's our ministry.
Neglect women, lose election, wangbo wa. We have some questions here. The first one goes thus, my question is for the Yalajas. Who do you think is to blame for vote buying and selling? Awa ya wa to one b, talo ya ka de bi, biwa she in bi, di bo ko se be, o jo di bo ba, to ba ti pa wa kosi koro, to ba ti vi two thousand, le wa lo wa, wa fe menti, o da, wa fe menti o da, ento ba ti fa wa lo wo, talo ya ka de biro.
Ti wa fu lo wo, o ye ka jo mu wa ni. Si wa ba ba de stedi ye, eya kokore ni ba wo, but in to fa, awa to ya ka de biro, awa ni awa, tang ba lo wo ma. Bi mo she wa, itimo wa in politics, any ko le bri bu mi pe, ki ba wo, ki to lo di bo, ko le ri be. Then the education now are very important, then is she, ke ye ni she ti e lo wa, o si kata le fu ye to le jo ye ye lo ju, but awa tang ba lo ye ka de biro. Because, eh lo mi a so fuwa wipé wa ni fa wa ma, o di after eh four years, ka wa to to limi ba, wa shekwe fu la wa ni. So awa tang ba ni kama ba ma, tori pe te ba fu wa, ti mwa ba la wo fe, o ju ati wa, awa no ni fu wa. Shubua we yo ni ba o, tori pe eh lo mi, moti de o jo ya kari, ti mo ka, ti mo lo ka pe fu, ti ya ye so wipé, eh ni to ba ma fu lo wo diaro, lo le go o cha de, ni no le, cha ba tele fu lo wo diaro, o wo ni porta. Pe she ri a wa enya wa, wa ni porta, especially at grassroots level, ti mwa ba fi o wo ti wa, ke ka porta, wa ni porta o. Wa ni tori pe a wa ni ri wa ma, so awa ni, o ye ka da e biro, wa tang ba lo wo.
Eche, ari ya wa ya ka to na wa le ye.
Eh, ni te mi o, awa ti anfu ye lo wo ga ga ga, lo ye ka ba wi. Ni, anye anse primary, la kokoa, one pre millions, eh wa de lian fa wa kani five hundred naira, eni kamak, wa ita wa to wa lo ke ba. Awa to wa lo ke kilo de ti wa ba, awa te wa, me, 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 no ma kota wa ba, no wo, awa ni de po ye. Pe ta wa ba, no wo, awa ni de po ye, so awa ga ga ga, na ba Nigeria je, eh mo lo si lu ka malawi. Nte anso fa wa ni wipé, o wa ta komisiana wa ngba, pe ise mi, mi ga money. Si a ba, me kilati ma pe, mi ha money eh, pa ya beni, mi niye ma bi no. So, o wa ta wa ye ngba, ani kokoa, so, emba fe si lu, lo la ti contest, po fe si lu, ko ni pe, eh bi bot. Lo de one b, o wa ti anfe ngba ye ga, lo de be, o unfe da ka gomina ka, unba to kokoa de be, o ya o wo de be, ni unba to, no wo ye ta, mi de le to de be. O wa ti a si wa ge, unba da ge si o wo ye na ni pe, o wa to fi contesti, si a lo ko ngini. O wo ye lo kokoa ba, awa ye ngba ye ba ni ba wi, eh ge, eh, eh, ni kan ye o de one be ejo, we mi ti be lo si kinio, human right le mi, moti be lo si kote. O, o fu, eh, ni ka ba, ala ba, ala bo, ala ba one thousand, ejo, ti anfe she kinie, mo ni tori pe wa ba one thousand, ewa lo reporte. Eh, ni na wa ko lo ka fu, ajo wa ko lo si kote, unba ade kote, bo ni ki ne fe, eh wa ni ki ne jo ta fe de fu, bo ye ye, ala bo wo, bo lo wo ki lo ba. So, ak ba le ye, ba ba ni wa ju, wa ni, eh, ni ka wa ba wa take, eh, ni jo, primary, so awa go wo, bo ni kilo de te lo moti no bu. Eh eh, mo ati ku, awa te so, unka di to that kote, o fu wa le, wa ni kama, eh, ni ki bo ye yama lo. Ti ba le ye, eje ka wa ya ta one b, eje ka be ja wa ma wa, te ba ti ni ame ni, lo re moti no bu, cha ti ye ti re ba ti de ko lo ma ti ku. Bo ba wa ti ano wa ye lo ye ka ba wo.
Eshuma. Ento wa lebe wa.
Aba te mi, itimo ni lo kan ni, o ti an solataro, no ri ya wa ti ya ye ka da lebi, awa ta anye si po, ti mwa, ti wa, ni kwa wa. Ti mo she lu, ti mwa si kame, awa lo je bi, tori ti mwa ba she dada, ti mwa tu lu si, ti o se bi ni lu, ti o si nyan. Kosa ni ti o ma ba wo to sa, o kosa wa kaka ta wa go ma be kiri, no, sena ma ti no fa na. No, she kato ya ka she wa shou ju she, wa, to ba so ba wa she, wa ni she, onkabi ni wa ma she, ane ri kaka ma, o to, inya, inya lo fa, ta we ya fi bo wo. Awa ta wa, awa, awa, awa li li da wa lo je bi, awa la, awa, awa to she bu ni o she dada.